To order and at least give people process. We had talked about it, so Vice President Curry is not missing anything. So I'll call the meeting to order and Karen, can you please call the roll?
Yes, President Furman.
Present.
Vice President Curry is not here. Alder Bennett.
Present.
Alder Conklin.
Present.
Alder Figaro, Figaro Cole.
Here.
Alder Foster.
Here.
Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Abbas.
Here.
You have Coram.
Great, thank you. So thank you, everybody for being here this evening. Actually, before I get into process, it doesn't look like we have any registered voters. We have registered commenters, so we're going to skip public comment. Is there any disclosures and recusals? Not seeing any, and so I will go ahead and explain to everybody our process tonight. I had sent out a note to the applicants and we had a bit of a discussion last night at CCEC, so there is some minor tweaks that I'm going to let everybody know about. Nothing, nothing too major, but we are just going to have one, one round of questions this evening. There won't be two rounds like our previous vacancy. Score, scoring will happen at the end. And there will be a total of five questions and candidates are asked to spend up to five minutes on those questions. I'll be honest, it's not a hard limit, but we would like you to try to stay within five minutes for those questions. All Alders from CCEC that are participating and that will include Alder Abbas this evening. It doesn't look like Vice President Curry is going to be with us for until possibly later and it's hard for her to obviously join the process. All, everybody should have a copy of our spreadsheet, a spreadsheet that was given just to help take notes about the questions and what questions are going to be asked of each Alder, should be sent out an email. And then we'll be using a ranking tool called Pivot and I sent out a screenshot. Everybody with the exception of Alder Abbas has experience with that, but I'm happy to show, show what that looks like on a screen if people think that's helpful. I'm going to go ahead and send an invite to Alder Abbas for that right now.
Thank you. There's a, let me raise my hand. There's a question, President Furman. So if the interview starts and, and if Vice President Curry late, join later, then how would we proceed? Should I?
We're going, we're going to continue with you being a voting member this evening. I don't think it's appropriate for her to come halfway through and try to participate. She has to be here to hear everybody.
Sure, and please do share that pivot thing. I don't think, so I have that Excel sheet you shared.
Yep, the pivot link you should have gotten, everybody should have gotten within the last few minutes and Alder Abbas you should have gotten in the last maybe thirty seconds or so. You'll have to create an account there. Would anybody like me to show what the pivot looks like or was the screenshot in the email helpful in the past usage?
Yeah, I think so. I will be fine.
Okay, all right, great. And so I appreciate everybody hanging in there with me trying to figure out what to do with having somebody absent, a little bit more hectic than I expected, but it sounds like we are good to go. So Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
So the pivot, when you log in in there and even after you click in, is, are these new candidates set up? Because I only see District Three.
Yep, you should be able to refresh it and it should show up. For some weird reason, it doesn't show up on the first login, but I know for me, if I just refreshed the ballot again, it does, it does show that you've got it.
Yeah, it is, it is on the third row. It doesn't have a name, but once you click on it, it is actually still to have the name.
Looks like a weird, weird, weird thing, but yeah, it should show up and it looks like you've got it. And that voting will be at the end, so nobody needs to worry about that until we're done with all four. Unlike our previous process, and then as I said, you have a scoring sheet that you can use to take notes. So a lot throwing at it. I will say, does anybody, any Alders or any of the candidates have any questions about the process? Go ahead and use your raise hand feature if you do. Okay, thank you, everybody for bearing with me and we'll go ahead and start with our first candidate of the evening, which is Justin. Justin, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and the first question you'll be getting this evening is from Alder Bennett.
Hi, I'm so sorry. You have to give me a second. There's too many tabs and I, I know I just had this thing up, but I. Okay, hold on one second. I'm so sorry. Okay, here we go. Thank you for bearing with me. What knowledge, skills and resources do you already possess that will help you become an effective interim Alder?
Yeah, thanks, Alder Bennett. I would start by saying my current role working right now is as a, teacher is the best word for it. That's familiar, but we call ourselves mentors and I work for a group called Wild Harvest Nature Connection. I am essentially with seven to eleven year olds all day. Today was a doozy with, with the rain and we're just out at Lake Farm County Park and we're spending time together. And I've been in roles of education a few different years. I've also been in sort of the software industry as a, in a manager role, managing some teams and on my resume, I included my, my role as a stay-at-home dad and I know I'm not unique in that, in that way either. But I think that the skills to be an Alder it comes down to facilitating dialogue. Having a conversation with people and that's something that I've, I've felt kind of my whole life that I've, I've been in a role of mediator where I find myself in the middle of two positions. Maybe I feel torn towards two different positions for different reasons and usually find myself able to empathize with others. And a skill that I possess, something that I spend time working on is, is just a skill of nonviolence. To me, that means finding third ways, finding ways that work for multiple people. You know, a lot of times we're presented with this issue is a win-lose or a lose-win. And to me, the skill of nonviolence is about finding, finding win-wins and often in creative and unexpected ways. When it comes to kids, when it comes to my own children, and then when it comes to large teams of people with, you know, a lot of different motivations and backgrounds and angles that they may see a particular issue, that's what it comes down to for me is, is understanding different positions, having the ability to have a dialogue and finding kind of a third way. One thing I'd, I'd say in addition to that is would it be possible for you to repeat the, the question, Alder Bennett?
Of course. The question is, what knowledge, skills and resources do you already possess that will help you become an effective interim Alder?
Thank you. I think the last thing that I just want to add is, you know, you can, you can see in my inability to roll off some, some words off the tip of my tongue here. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not someone who's like in the political world. It's not very interesting to me and I, I hope maybe that's evidenced by my, by my resume. I absolutely want to acknowledge the, the three other candidates here. They seem super qualified and I do feel kind of humbled to, to, you know, throw my hat in the ring with them. But I, I I would be kind of a choice of a different model of leadership. I use that word nonviolence. And I hope to bring something other than the status quo. For, for many, I know we look at politics as there are some problems that have to do with the status quo thing and, and that's what I would want to be working against. Thanks.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna, I was gonna say this in the beginning. I'm gonna say this now. This, we appreciate everybody being here and applying for this. I did this four years ago. I actually applied for a vacancy. I, we, I think we all recognize this is stressful. So I did, I had meant to, to say that in the beginning and definitely just at least want to say that now that thank you so much for, for putting yourselves out, out here and answering our questions this evening and being willing to volunteer to serve your community. So wanted, wanted to say that and then we'll go back to the questions. Alder Conklin, you're up next.
Thank you, President Furman. Hi, Justin. I want you just to take a deep breath and relax. Most of us on this board didn't have any experience, much like myself, honestly, single parent, raising my children, put myself through school. So I understand the pressure that you're under, but you're doing a fine job. So my question is, please describe the ways you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion and how you would model these practices in these, this assignment. Please provide an example of measure you have taken to further your knowledge of equity, inclusion and racial justice.
Thank you. I actually feel a bit of a relief that I get to keep going. I thought that we were all going to switch and take turns. This is, this is nice. So I, I and my family, we live below the federal poverty line. That's an intentional decision we make. I could keep working in the software industry, could make some really good money and that's, that's good and well, and I, I'm not knocking that. And I'm also really aware of wealth inequality for, as one example. Both the Race Equity Report and there's another report, one of them at the Wisconsin state level and another one focused on Dane County. Both of these show some real jarring disparities. And I, I don't, I don't know personally what the solutions are, but coming to understand them and learning from people who who are working on some of these, are working on solutions, that's, that's one thing that I would name to do. And not continuing to further some of those things, that's a, that's a piece of why I choose to make, make the income that I make. Some ways that I have done this in the past, participated in, in learning or facilitated, there's a network that I'm a part of called the Fierce Vulnerability Network. But it's, it's a group focused on meeting at the intersection of climate change and climate action and racial healing. This is a group that I have, my wife and I, we facilitated a workshop here in, in Madison. I didn't, I didn't lead that workshop. Rather, we, we hosted that workshop, kind of open to the public. We offered that on the gift economy, so we didn't charge people for it. There were expenses that we found ways to come together and cover. That was at the United Way downtown. And I would, I would name, you know, being a part of that network and, and then learning from people who, who that's connected me to. Another flop that I would, that I would want to, not another flop, but a flop that I would want to, want to mention is I worked to, to try to host community dialogue here in my neighborhood. I haven't, that hasn't been super successful. You know, we've chatted with a couple people. But trying to find ways to do that, identify as a, as a white, white man and I know that and, and I hear when I listen to especially black leadership that having these conversations, that's something that, that I need to do, that I, that I need to do this in my family and that's something that I do with my children and start to have conversations about, about race, about racism. I'm in my head about whether to ask you to repeat the question or if I'm around time and I think, I think I'd leave it at that for now.
Okay, thank you so much, Justin.
Our next question will be from Alder Foster.
Hi, Justin. It's a two-part question and pretty simple. What are some of the critical issues facing District Twenty and what are some of the critical issues facing the city?
I'll start with my knowledge of critical issues facing the city because it's better than in my own neighborhood. In my own neighborhood, I know my personal experience, but I, I don't have a broad understanding of critical issues facing, you know, the, the breadth of District Twenty. And this kind of gets at some of the reasons that I wanted to, to apply for this vacancy. Some of my knowledge of, of what the city council does and I think about funding. I think about, you know, permits. I think about land use. And when I, when I say funding, I'm, I'm thinking about schools, making sure that our fools are fools are funded, especially equitably. That's not something that seems that, that seems to be an area of focus and, and, and always, you know, it, it, that's not a new, that's not a new thing. I think about police funding. I think about the city's plans to renovate a jail and spend a whole lot of money there and I think might there possibly be better ways to spend that kind of money? I, I also, you know, I think about climate change. That's something I've mentioned once or twice. And, and, and this, I think, does apply both across the city and specifically in my district. Is how do we make resilient neighborhoods? My family has kind of a mission statement that we've created and the core of it is that we want to be a hub of resiliency. And for me, that means everything from food resiliency of what can we grow here? We're trying to grow as much as we can in our backyard, in our front yard. We have some chickens and we're eating those eggs because the food miles on those eggs, it's, it's really small. And I'm learning the forage. I, I, part of this, this nature school that I'm a part of and a couple of other traditions that my wife's been learning from and, and I've been learning from are about what, what food is out there? What have people been eating on this land for thousands of years? And how do we tend the land in that way? How do we support that? And I think about resiliency in the face of major flooding. That, that was one of the things that came to mind is like, okay, that's an obvious talking point and, and, and it, and I it really, it hit, it hit close to home to me to see Matt Fair running, who I knew to be someone who he has firsthand experience of, of climate change and the massive flooding that we had in this neighborhood not that long ago. Little shout out, Matt. I think, I think that's most of what I want to say. I guess, I guess hub of resiliency to me can mean in many other ways too. And that is where I talk about, or that, that is where I think about dialogue and how do we come together as a community? How do we get neighbors to know each other? And lean on each other in ways that keep us closer to home, making walkable, livable neighborhoods. Thanks, Alder Foster.
Thank you. Our next question is from Alder Figaro Cole.
Justin, this is, this might be a long question. So I'll take my time doing it. You receive a lot of feedback from residents surrounding a project in District Twenty. Your general sense is sixty percent are in favor of the project and forty percent are against it. How do you balance public feedback against policies, goals and priorities? What steps do you take into consideration to arrive at your conclusion?
Thanks, I'm just jotting a quick note down. Step number one, I think, is to understand, you know, what are the multiple points that these sixty percent in favor? You know, what, what are their reasons? Why do they want it? Do they, do they see some of the downsides of this project? And what are the, what are the points of these forty percent of people who are against it? And try to understand both broad strokes and, and the specifics of what could be different. Because those forty percent who are opposed to it, they may have some, you know, they, they, they have some very real and important feedback that should probably be taken into consider, consideration and may help shape the project and move it towards success. I think it depends on, you know, how big is this project? Is this multimillion dollar? Is this a pilot project? And depending on that, you know, on that spectrum, it could mean a community conversation. It could mean town hall. It could mean you know, creating a very easy feedback mechanism, whether it's, hey, let's submit comments in this way. And then it could be a, a response would, would probably include messaging. So maybe that messaging is flyers in the neighborhood. Maybe that messaging is something that's showing up at local parks or the places where these people who are in favor and against can receive information and that we can enter into dialogue. And work through the things that need to be worked through and, you know, at the end of the day, there are going to be decisions that someone's not going to like and they're not, you know, there's nothing that I can do to make this person happy. And yet we feel like we found the right path forward and, and it works for, for the most people. And so that, that's a conversation as well. It doesn't have to be a fun one. But, but there's a place for difficult conversations to convey, here's what we need to do and here's, here's how we have figured out the, the best way to move forward. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last question will be from Alder Heck.
Hi, Justin. This is a relatively short question. How do you reach District Twenty residents who are not engaged in traditional ways like neighborhood associations?
Yeah, thanks for that question. You spend time in the neighborhood. To me, so I, I don't have time in certain capacities, like I'm, I'm, I'm busy and I know we're all busy. Something I do have time for is, is spending time outside. That's like, that's what my job is. That's what I like to do. So whether it's at Lucy Highstand Park, working on a composting pilot project there or walking, you know, walking around the neighborhood with my family and I, I imagine knocking on doors. I, I don't actually know what, what is possible and but, but then similarly, being at the local schools, that's a place where you find busy people who aren't engaged in certain areas of civic life. And yet they're, they're the people who, who will be impacted or they are, they are a subset of people. And so just having my kids at Anana, just, you know, a couple of blocks away. That's a place where I meet the people of, of District Twenty. And it's really meaningful to me to have my kids there because this is where we make connections that are local. Local, and, and I mean in the, in the, in a very, very local sense on, you know, couple of streets away, you know, families who live in this neighborhood. So, so making connections at that local level, that's, that's a, that is a way to do that for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Justin. At this time, I wanted to give any members an opportunity to ask clarifying questions about anything. All right. Thank you very much, Justin. Um, at this time, I wanted to give any members uh an opportunity to ask clarifying questions about anything Justin said. We don't want to use this as an opportunity necessarily for for new questions, but if there's something he said that you would like clarified, I'm going to raise your hand and I'll call on you and you can ask. Okay, not seeing any. Uh, Justin, thank you so much. Um, we're going to move on to our next applicant. Um, and that that is Matt. Matt, welcome. Um, our first question will be from Alder Bennett.
Hi, Matt. Okay, let me do this again. Question, what knowledge, skills, and resources do you already possess that will help you become an effective interim alder?
Great, thank you. Um, I first just want to apologize as I have a nagging cough getting over COVID, so I I might have a little cough here once in a while, so apologize for that. So I I think I have a pretty, uh, first of all, thank you for having us. This is a pleasure to be here. Um, I have a pretty uh good working knowledge of how the council works, spending um eight years on the council in in the past decade. Um, so I understand um the processes, the things like how an agenda is built, the committee process, um, you know, how to work with staff. Um, I have current relationships or relationships, professional relationships with staff. Um, I have relationships in the district. And know, you know, how the district works and who the neighborhood associations are, all that kind of thing. As far as skills go, I think um I am generally a a good listener, an active listener, and that usually in all walks of life for me provides um me with respect that I get from others and therefore I can bring folks together and try to pro, you know, solve problems that um that are facing the city, facing the district. Um, I'm a pretty patient person, which has helped me um teach adolescents for the last fifteen, sixteen years. And maybe it's a uh sit-through-long council meeting, so. Um, and 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 but, you know, just listen and understand folks and really think through issues. Um, because at the end of the day, that's that's what we're all trying to do is is solve hard problems. And there's a lot of different viewpoints and you need to be able to hear all sides um before you make a decision and before you try to put proposals together or programs together, things like that. Um, as far as resources go, I I probably touched on this a little bit, but, you know, I think I I would provide um an institutional knowledge to the council. Just having been there. Uh, and I know that um there's, I think this is the third person, the third uh seat that is up, which is pretty um pretty rare. So I know there's quite a bit of turnover in the middle of a term, not to mention there was quite a bit of turnover in the last couple of cycles. So I would hope that I, if I were appointed, could bring some of that knowledge and experience to the council. I I don't think I would need, you know, a ramp-up time or anything like that. Um, or be trained, that kind of thing, so I could probably hit the ground running. Take over uh for for Alder La Boras, who's done a wonderful job and 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 really just try to sort of maintain and, um, you know, work on the things that he's been working on and hopefully provide some added value to the council as as we work through tough challenges that we have the city has um going forward. So um, yeah, I think I think that's that's what I got for that one.
Uh, thank you. Our next question will be from Alder Conklin.
Hi, Matt.
Hi.
Please describe the ways you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion and how you would model these practices in this assignment. Please provide an example of measure you have taken to further your knowledge of equity, inclusion, and racial justice.
Mm-hmm. So when I think of equity in this job, um, of course, there's all kinds of different ways to think about it, but and 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 specifically to District 20, um, you know, traditionally alders, um, I guess historically, uh, y- y- you know, reach out or work with the neighborhood associations. And as we know, sometimes the neighborhood associations uh tend to be skew more white, uh, maybe more middle-class, more you know, are are uh homeowners compared to tenants, that kind of thing. And I know that's not the case all over and with all neighbor associations, but it was the case uh and probably still is the case here in District 20. And I I I guess on my in my experience, um, I certainly were had great relationships with all the neighbor associations, but I recognized that if I was going to be equitable, I needed to have a little bit more of a focus and attention spent to folks who weren't always um getting that service from their alder, going back to um, the previous alder, when I when I got on the council. And so um, I made a real point of you know, working with those those leaders, those community groups, grassroots organizers, um, folks, you know, names that you've probably heard, Sherei and the Sa, Coach Assad and and many other folks in the district who were representing, quite frankly, um, people who hadn't been necessarily represented in in the city or listened to or had an avenue, a liaison to work through city processes and things like that. So I really took that as um as a way to just do equity. And instead of just um thinking about it and putting like systems in place, all important things that we do at a citywide level. But on the ground, uh, if we were going to be equitable, I thought it was important to really try to represent um, folks who hadn't necessarily had the ear of the city or the resources from the city. Um, an example of that would be the Neighborhood Center and Trees of Terrace that um I was able to help become what it is. Uh, and the way that worked was listening to, literally going into the neighborhood and and talking to folks and meeting in folks' houses and they had been planning and wanting the city to 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 listen to them for quite a while and what they wanted was a neighborhood center and it seemed like almost, I don't want to use the word ridiculous, but like a crazy idea. Um, and we just kept talking, we kept working and we kept um thinking about it and we grew the group and then we grew the effort and eventually through all kinds of bumps and um, you know, ebbs and flows along the way, um, there's a Neighborhood Center and Trees of Terrace. So that's just an example, I think, of um, you know, maybe I spent more time uh there than and and maybe there were some folks uh neighbor associations or or who were traditionally listened to a little bit more, who were frustrated. And it wasn't my intent to necessarily to frustrate anybody, but it was just, you know, if we're going to be equitable, we sometimes need to, you know, look where where there is the need and where um resources need to be to flow and people need to be empowered. So um, I guess that's how I would answer that question is I kind of try to live equity as much as I can as a a white male who has privilege. And to use the the position um as an avenue for folks.
Uh, thank you. Our next question is from Alder Foster.
Matt, uh, same question as last round. Uh, talk to us about the critical issues facing District 20 and uh those facing the city.
So um, I think what I what I've heard and what I've um gathered as issues in District 20, some of them are similar and have been there for quite a while and some are new. I think traffic safety, which we know is an issue all over the city, all over the country, um, has been quite an issue lately uh in uh District 20 um with, you know, inattentive driving and speeding and that kind of thing. So I think that will be an issue that I'll certainly try, would would try to have my ear to the ground on. Coordinated and complimentary uh services, social services, I think, is a challenge. Uh, one that um, but is very important and I think the district always sort of contends with, I guess, um, especially for young people, especially in the summer. Um, so that's definitely an issue. Public safety is always an issue in District 20. I think the question becomes, how do we define public safety? What does that mean? I I've always maintained that public safety should be looked at through a a public health lens in a comprehensive way. Um, and have a history and I I I don't I don't necessarily need to go into to all the stuff that I done, I have done on the along those lines, but definitely, uh, really, and I think I would uh continue to work on the idea that we need to look at public safety as a public health issue, one that is about root causes. Um, and so I would just continue that work, I guess, in District 20, because I know that's an issue. You know, I think um cost of living for seniors and folks on on fixed income is definitely an issue as well. So we need to just be very mindful of, you know, taxes and fees that they don't increase at an unsustainable level. Um, that's something that I think um I would hear I hear about from folks. So those were, those are the things that kind of bubble up as I think about um issues in District 20. Citywide, um, we know that we're going to have a difficult twenty twenty-three budget going forward. So I think that's that's, you know, going to be a a main focus. Um, we all know that we still, just like everywhere, are dealing with an affordable housing um crisis and I I think, and I know the city is trying to do this, we need to have a yes and sort of all hands on deck approach to that. Um, and I've uh been working, you know, I'm the chair of the CDBG Committee and certainly we've been working on that, um, um, you know, for forever, it seems like, um, and we will continue to. Um, homelessness is is a big issue. I think we need to just make sure that we continue to work well with the county and continue this momentum that we finally have going forward with the the men's shelter and things like that. You know, transit and BRT is a a big issue for the city, the state of downtown and State Street. Um, I sort of touched on this, but there's a persistent, luckily not maybe a as bad as some other places, but gun uh violence pro uh problem in the city. And and we need, again, to really continue to think outside of the box and be creative on how we deal with that and work with our partners, um, not just in the city and the county, but in, you know, nonprofit partners and the health or and hospitals and things like that. Um, but I think most importantly, the biggest issue, and it's really one that's sort of been a slow-rolling um, challenge for all of us is that it, and that is how fast our city is growing and how fast it's changing. And, you know, are we setting up our city for the future? So that um we embrace that change and that we have a city that eventually is, you know, let's let's be honest, is run by, is empowered by um all folks, you know, all people, um, all all neighborhoods. So that, you know, one of the things that I think about all the time is are, will our students, and I know we don't have direct purview over the schools, but we have a relationship with them. Will our students and especially our black and brown students who have opportunities and are getting into the middle class, well, they want to live in Madison. And I don't know right now that we can say, yes, they will. Because are we culturally responsive? Are we a place, do we have avenues to the working class or the middle class that are here in in Madison? Uh, granted, people people leave and 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 go to other places because they want to, that's fine, but let's hope that we don't have folks that are are saying, you know, I can't stay in Madison because it just doesn't, it just doesn't um have enough for me. So I think that's that's sort of the big, the big challenge that we should always have in our mind is like, are we setting up our city for the change changes and the diversity that we have? So that it's a vibrant place that continues to grow, because those are the cities that are gonna, that are gonna, you know, continue to grow and attract business and investment. And if not, we're going to fall behind. So. Thanks.
Uh, thank you. Our next question is from Alder Alder Figurale. Go ahead.
You chair. Hi, Matt.
Hi.
Hi, um. You receive a lot of feedback from residents surrounding a project in the district. You general, your general sense is sixty percent are in favor of the project and forty percent are against it. How do you balance public feedback against policies, goals, and priorities? What steps do you take into consideration to arrive at your conclusion?
Thank you for that question. I know this is one that um all alders face at some point or another. Um, I think, uh, you know, first and foremost, uh, it's very important to just be as organized and transparent and thorough in the process as possible. And I think, you know, in this example, you can't take for granted that the sixty percent are correct in their reasons, just because they're in the majority and vice versa. You can't kind of assume that the forty percent don't have good reasons for being against it just because they're in the minority. Um, and and the other thing, I guess, on that is, if for nothing else, we don't really have a good system to know for sure that a sixty percent and forty percent, right? Um, you can count emails and and maybe we have some systems, I don't know, in the council office now that that help with that, but even then, if we do, they're probably not, you know, a hundred percent correct. So you never really know for sure um what the sort of the breakdown is. Um, but what I've found, and I think I'm sure a lot of you have found, is of those forty percent, it's really, really important to to listen to them and hear them out. Um, and to, you know, take their um concerns seriously and to try to get their questions answered. You know, so whether that, and and if we're talking about like a development, I guess that's what I'm thinking about in my head, but it could be some other types of projects. But if it's a development, then, you know, you can get the answers from, of course, the developers and city staff. Um, so, you know, you would do that, obviously, at 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 um neighborhood meetings. Um, but just going back to the transparency part, it's very important that you are, you know, not just relying on the notification, the official notification from Plan Commission, but that you're posting it in all your socials and all of your, you know, neighborhood listservs and Nextdoor, whatever it might be. I think it's also important to be transparent transparent, like if, so if an alder has a meeting with the developer beforehand, which is very common, or with staff to, you don't have to necessarily talk about all the things you talked about in that meeting with the developer, but maybe an email in the listservs to, and your blogs or whatever you're using to say, hey, I met with the the um, the developers and I heard about the project and it's exciting, but we have some questions and I look forward to seeing you. You know, just so folks know, because as we all know, when people feel like they haven't been included, um, sometimes they maybe become a, I'll be careful what I'm saying, but, you know, somewhat irrational, even just because they feel like they haven't been a part of it. And people want their voices heard and and that's good. And so they should have their voices heard. Um, and and you just have to make sure that you're answering all their questions and and and, you know, then you sort of have to let the chips fall where they may. You know, and then it comes, i- i- at the end of the day, for you as an, for us as an alder, it comes down to you know, balancing what's good, what do you think is good for the district? Where you think your constituents are and how does that mesh with with the long-term, you know, get plans that the city has, depending on what kind of project it is. Um, and I guess that's the last thing I want to say in this is that, and I don't, I don't know, I, this is maybe just me, but I think sometimes we don't say this, is that we are, we, our job as alders, when I was an alder, or, you know, your jobs, is to listen to your constituents, yes, but it's sometimes then it is to be a leader. And sometimes, you know, um, you have to put your judgment forward. And if that is, if it's a fifty-fifty thing in your district or even sixty-forty the other way, and you really think that this is best for the city, sometimes you have to make those tough decisions. So, you know, it's mixing all those things. What's good for the district? What's good for the city? And then how do you, you know, what's, how do you judge it and what do you think is best? So, and I don't think, I think we 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 can't be afraid to just admit that and say that and then, you know, again, let those chips fall where they may. So, but most important is to have people's voices heard, even though people who are against it, so they they feel like they've they've had their questions answered and they've been listened to by the city, the the developer, the alders, mayor, it's whatever it might be. So. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is from Alder Heck.
Hi, Matt. Uh, you've touched on this uh a couple of times, but hopefully you'll have a little bit more to add. How do you reach District 20 residents who are not engaged in traditional ways like neighborhood associations?
Hmm. Again, I think it's just, um, you know, as many avenues as you can use to communicate, I guess, is the best, right? So there's definitely neighborhood associations and their listservs. But uh as you you all know, there's your blog and there's any listserv that you might have created um on your own as an alder. There's social media, which is becoming more, obviously more important or more useful. Um, or maybe, maybe it's more headache, I don't know. Um, but certainly a way to communicate. Uh, and then, um, you know, things like Nextdoor. And then there is, as Justin mentioned, there is, there is a value to being out in the neighborhood uh in the district and going to whichever, whatever functions there are, meetings there are. Obviously, neighborhood association meetings, I think, are important to attend, but I know there's several, you know, smaller working groups um in District 20 and probably all kinds of districts. Important to at least try to get to those or be an advocate of those, be open to those. Um, certainly, obviously, being open in communication and emails, so trying to get back to people as quick as you can. I think just, just, you know, what if someone said like, what is this, like, half of the job is showing up? So just being seen, you know, um, and being accessible. I think that, and using all the avenues and the tools that we have today to communicate.
Uh, thank you, Matt. Uh, are there any questions, clarifying questions from alders on anything Matt said? Again, we're trying not to add more questions, but um certainly if there's something he said that you want to get clarified, Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Well, I guess it's an added question.
Yeah, we're not going to do that, sorry.
Ask a question and then you can tell me if it's appropriate or not?
Um, sure.
Okay. Well, Matt, you've been an alder before. And you, I think you touched on, like, your your experiences a lot. Um, but I'm just wondering why you want to do this again?
So I'm not going to let Matt answer that. I just don't think that's fair to the other candidates for Matt to get uh more opportunity to speak. Um, so I I apologize, Alder Bennett, um, but we're we're gonna, we're gonna stick to the script. Um, any other questions uh from Alder? Um, any other questions, uh, from alders? All right, not seeing any. Um, thank you, Matt, and we'll move on to our next applicant, Joseph. Um, our first question coming from, uh, Alder Bennett.
Well, now I get to ask an appropriate question. Um. So Joseph, what knowledge, skills and resources? Do you already possess that will help you become an effective interim alder?
Yeah, um, first thing to say, good job, Justin. It's hard going first. Um, but for my experience with that is one, uh, creating the the neighborhood association, um, here, uh. Which was District One, but now District Twenty, um, which is the Madison West Neighborhood Association and working closely with our alders. Um, as well as working with the different city staff. But also with the community, which I think is the the biggest part, um. And I agree pretty much with everything Matt said, so I don't know. How much I can differ besides having the other experience, but, you know, attending, um. The different common council meetings, even the long budget ones, and being one of the few, I think, still on at two o'clock in the morning. Um, and just wondering how you guys do that every year. Um, but yeah, I think that. With the experience working with city staff, being on the sustainability committee, um, previously. Um, I think I can bring that, those tools and resources.
Uh, thank you. Our next question is from Alder Conklin.
Hi, Joseph.
Hello.
Please describe the way you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion, and how would you model these practices in this assignment? Please provide an example of measure you have taken to further your knowledge of equity, inclusion and racial justice.
Yeah, so, um, I was, uh, fortunate enough to have some, um. Training, I guess, I don't know if you would call training presentations, uh, with through the NRT. Um, so I, it was very knowledgeable to me and I, you know, the. The reports that came, um, out and that are out there are very, you know, eye opening. Um, and so some of the ways that we, uh, approached this, at least from my experience is that. We looked, when we started the neighborhood association, we said, how do we, can we address this? What, what is it possible that we can accomplish? And one of the things that we looked at was the food disparities in our area, and that's why we started the Albert Park Farmers Market slash Community Market. And we said, okay, that's great, but how do you make it equitable? So we worked with the city, um, through the Food Council, got a grant, worked with the Double Dollars Program, worked with WIC, worked with private businesses. Um, worked with the FDA or FDA, I think, um, to get the, um. Uh, the SNAP program going there. And then we also got private donations from businesses to help. Give out vouchers to the community, um, both in previous older District One and older District Two at the time. Um, and hand out ten dollar vouchers, uh, throughout the entire neighborhoods as much as we could with the resources we had. Um, and try and bring that, uh, that disadvantaged equity gap, trying to do something with that. Um, also bringing in different resources around the community from, um, the Dade County Health Services. Um, to different health groups such as SSM. Um, and bringing out some resources that could help with knowledge and stuff like that for the community.
Uh, thank you. Our next question is from Alder Foster.
Hi Joseph, uh, talk to us about the critical issues that are facing District Twenty and those that are, you think are facing the city.
Sure, I, I, I hate to sound like a broken record, but I think everything Matt said is correct. Um, we are facing. A lot of issues here. I don't think any issues are particularly to the west side that anybody else isn't facing. Um, we have continued, uh, shortage in childcare. Uh, especially for low and medium income families here. Um, we do have an increase in crime and safety issues. I think, you know, we're seeing that citywide. Um, affordable housing is an issue. Um, we also have increasing tax rates. Um, that's gonna affect everybody from renters to homeowners and it's just the cost of living is skyrocketing. Um, you also have an increased infant mortality rate here in this district. Um, where, you know, we have to figure what we can do as a community to help solve that and fill that gap. Um, homelessness is an issue that we know, that's something I think the city is moving on. Um, I'd like to see faster movement. But it's, it's just, you know, citywide issues are our issues and vice versa.
Uh, thank you. Our next question is from Alder Figaro Cole.
Hello, Joseph. Um. So you receive a lot of feedback from residents surrounding a project in the district. Your general sense is sixty percent are in favor of the project and forty percent are against it. How do you balance public feedback against policies, goals and priorities? What steps do you take into consideration to arrive at your conclusion?
Yeah, so I, I, I go with Matt, um, but I would hold a lot of meetings, um, public meetings out in the, uh. Community centers, um, at the parks, wherever people can safely come and easily get there. Um, but also understand the feedback from both sides, if it, it must be opposing. Um, and really understand it, but also if it's a policy issue or goals or whatever, look at those policies and goals and. Understand them. Why are they there? Are they actually not good goals or policies? And address that as well. But at the end of the day, I think, you know. That's the crux of the issue, being a public servant, is that you're gonna have to go with what you think is best. Um, and take, you know, all the information, be transparent about it and move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And our last question is from Alder Heck.
Hi Joseph, uh, you too also mentioned a little bit about this, but I'd like to hear more if you can. Uh, how do you reach District Twenty residents who are not engaged in traditional ways like neighborhood associations?
Yeah, I think you have to work with the community navigators, with the, um, nonprofits, the churches, um. Uh, here in our district, we have the Wisconsin Youth Company that works with a lot of families, um, so engaging through them, but also. Uh, making yourself available. I really believe like, um, like, once a week, make yourself available in a park or a coffee shop. So that people have a chance to come and meet with you. Um, email is okay, um, but it's. I, you really have to get out there and just engage people and find where they're at.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Are there any clarifying, uh, questions by alders? Okay, uh, not seeing any. Thank you so much, Joseph. Um, we, we are going to, uh, move on to our next applicant, Islam. Um, uh, welcome. Uh, we, our first question is from Alder Bennett.
Hello, hello.
Hi there.
Okay, so what knowledge, skills and resources? Do you already possess that will help you become an effective interim alder?
Alright, first of all, thank you CCEC for your time and effort to fill this, uh, interim alder position for D20. I also have a throat problem, so I'm a little, uh, harsh on my throat right now. What I'll try to do is, uh, not repeat what I have provided in my application, uh, and and put some, uh, skills forward. Uh, one of the skills I think is resource management and prioritization. My experience through, uh, for-profit companies have taught me resource management and prioritization. As you know, every organization is always finding ways to reduce expenses to increase their bottom line. I can give you many situations, uh, an example from my, from my professional experiences. But I want to draw your attention to what I have stated in my application. Uh, I grew up in an economically underprivileged locality in Mumbai, India. Where scarcity of resource or availing basic necessity was a daily struggle. Uh, this city, uh, has Asia's largest slums. Um, and folks that remember, you know, this was picturized in Slumdog Millionaire. Luckily, I do not have or live in a shanty type of housing. Uh, but nonetheless, we receive rationed water through community hose. Outside the apartment building that needed to, that needed to be collected in a bucket. And bought to the apartment and stored for consumption later. Also, I had to share common toilet facility with other neighbors', uh, families, you know. So the concept of sharing and being considered, considerate to fellow citizen runs in my vein. Uh, for a lot of folks to study under street lights might sound cliche. Uh, but, uh, to be honest, you know, all my high school and associate degree, uh, uh, you know, education was done under street light. So not only how to consume resources, but when to consume it and when to conserve it. For future use is a skill, uh, necessity has intervened in it within, uh, you know, uh, by my personality. The other, uh, skill is data-driven decisioning. That comes from my IT technology background. Being in technology professional. Use of data-driven decision, whether we make recommendations on climate change, renewable energy or distribution of resources. Tracking data, collecting data, analyzing patterns, reporting through dashboard and taking informed decision on something I do every day in my job. You know, I would incorporate that discipline and collaborate, collaborate with other members. Of the common council, so decisions are fact-based and we leave emotions out in making the right choice for this great city. Uh, one other thing, and this alludes to what I've provided in my resume, is coaching and mentoring some. This is something I enjoy doing. If I was not a technology guy, I would be a teacher or a coach, and I think as a community leader, this is a great skill to have. All my work with sports club and teaching is fueled through my need to guide and lead people to their goals. This, you know, just like others did to me, right? This is something I follow in my job as well. Where I practice servant leadership and lead my team with empathy. Uh, finally, also want to, uh, you know, mention that I have a global multicultural experience. I'm a good listener with tolerance to all point of view. Though I was raised with a specific culture and faith, I grew up in a predominantly Hindu neighborhood. I did my education up to middle school in a Catholic school and my high school education was in a Zoroastrian school. And these are all different cultures and faith. I, I worked with, I worked in Middle East, uh, for one, for one year as an expat from India. I moved to United States. I have traveled and spent time in more than ten countries across the globe. But I was born and brought up in India where language, food and culture change every thirty miles. This tolerance fuels empathy, which is critical for any leader, especially, uh, in public service. As an alder, I will evaluate situation from my constituents' points of view. Okay? Um, as an alder, I, I will bring these skills in action to prioritize for my district based on equity and fairness. Uh, to be, to be considerate with people and have, uh, uh, you know, have. Uh, especially those have been systematically disadvantaged, so we dispense the resources for the most deserving. You know, and, uh, quickly, I, I know we have time, but I, I also want to mention that, you know, I am an Asian American from India. Asian American forms nine percent of the population of the city of Madison, which is approximately twenty-five percent. It is the fastest growing community in Madison and is also very affluent. The job of alder is represent constituents, but it also, uh, you know, building bridges within, within constituents. So, and I think this is a very good affluent community that can build and inspire others within the community. There are a lot of people from Asian community that can contribute to the development of the city to public service. I think there is reluctance in the community because we, the first generation were raised back home. With a system that focused us to believe politics is dirty, to avoid law enforcement at any cost. And and city municipals, uh, does not do, uh, does not get anything done. I want to break those stereotypes and with my selection, encourage and inspire other Asian American. To contribute to the betterment of the city of Madison, which I call home now. I want to be a resource for common council members when it comes to resolving issues of Madison's growing diverse population. I believe political representation is empowerment that drives, um, you know, that drives, uh, equity. And, uh, the racial justice, I think that's the foundation of American democracy. This nonpartisan position will, uh, you know, it will provide me that platform to influence. Uh, the decision we make, uh, for the city and its population. Therefore, I've decided to apply for this interim position as well. Uh, I'll stop here. Thanks, guys.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, Alder, uh, Conklin has requested that I read her question, so I will be asking the next question. Um, please describe the ways you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion, and how would you model these practices in this assignment? Please provide an example of measures you have taken to further your knowledge of equity, inclusion and racial justice.
Okay, uh, when it comes to equity and inclusion, I think. The first thing is to identify or acknowledge that there is an issue, right? There's an issue of equity and inclusion. I think that's the first step in in my mind, right? Then we need to understand also what it means to be equity. Equity does not mean equal for all, right? It really means raising underprivileged, underserved to a level playing field. Uh, by availing, uh, resources so they can break the barriers. Um, I remind myself and practice these two points on a regular basis. Uh, advancing equity requires commitment and partnership with all, uh, communities. Uh, in, in my current job on my team, I have four women leaders from different ethnic backgrounds, by choice, you know. These, uh, women have tough role, uh, to govern global vendors, but I selected this profile. Uh, to contribute to our D E and I, uh, culture of the company. I've made it mandatory for myself and my staff to attend D and I trainings available through our corporate learning center. I have served on planning team to design, uh, like the quiet space or or meditation space. We created for employees to consider all faith and practice to, to create an inclusive space. That welcomed all, uh, employees to practice their spiritual connection and learn from each other. Uh, I also want to give an example from my, uh, you know, uh, the community work. Uh, as an example of equity in practice, right? My involvement with the women, uh, empowerment through sports is about breaking the stereotypes and removing barriers. Uh, it might be too late for these women to make it to professional sports, but they are accompanied by their kids and husbands, uh, at the ground. You, you can only imagine, uh, the everlasting impact it, it makes on young girls watching their moms play. I strive to be a catalyst to bring in equity and inclusion for, uh, for section that is disadvantaged. I, I will pursue, uh, an approach of advancing equity for all who have been historically marginalized, underserved. Underprivileged, uh, especially, uh, you know, overseeing, uh, uh, overseeing the ones that are disconnected, you know, are disconnect. Disconnected communities, uh, are served, you know, uh. As an alder, I, I will bring to the table the voices of people adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality. Uh, these are ways I, I, you know, I think I demonstrate or have demonstrated equity and inclusion in, in my work. In my, uh, you know, uh, community services.
Uh, thank you. Our next question is from Alder Foster.
Hey, Islam, uh, what are some of the critical issues that are facing District Twenty and what are some of the critical issues facing the city?
Yeah, I, I think folks who, uh, spoke before me have talked about it, but I think, I want to put a little different perspective on, on that. Uh, with, with the issues, I also want to, uh, you know, applaud the solution that are put in place, right? Um, as my, as I mentioned in my introduction, you know, I, I know safety has been like a pressing issue for alder, uh, alboras. And there has been progress made, uh, on that front. Uh, I think there's a need to, for us to create an inclusive environment so that everyone feels welcome in, in the district, uh, in public space and in the city. Uh, I'm confident that, uh, I will be able to engage the diverse constituents in appropriate departments to enable it. Uh, uh, I, I think, uh, we, we talked about mental health and and crime, right? I applaud the common council in the city for its, uh, you know, CARES initiative started last September. Uh, it is great that we have leaders who understand, uh, the issue of mental health versus crime, criminal intent, right? Uh, it, it is great initiative to ensure that medical and behavioral health is integrated, uh, on the onset of the crisis, uh. I think we need to continue to invest more in mental health wellness and collaborate with law enforcement to identify the right response, uh, to the situation. Uh, as far as the crime situation is concerned, when we talk about safety, there's also, you know, uh. Uh, bicycle pedestrian, uh, overspeeding issue. Uh, I think these are the type of things that, uh, we need to commit to our city, uh, traffic engineering to address those issues. Uh, the other one I would say is District Twenty and and and, uh, more broadly also is workforce development. I think we need to create skilled district, uh, workforce development that provides good opportunity for our youth. Uh, we need to create some fast track program in partnership with the technical college that will help provide sustainable income for youth. And fund program that supports our minority business. Um, in specific to District Twenty, I know there, there is like a watershed, uh, study, uh, uh, in, in McKenna project. Right? That, uh, that should take, uh, I think it's concluded, we should, uh, knowing that climate change is real and we have seen the effects. Uh, of that couple of years ago when flooding happened on the west side, you know, property of, loss of property, loss of life. I think that, uh, improvement project needs to, uh, needs to be taken care of, again, based on the priority, based on, uh, you, you know, equity. Uh, of the residents. Uh, broadly speaking, Madison, uh, you know, budget, uh, will be a big one. You know, I understand city, uh, uh, is in budget deficit, uh, cost of services have gone, uh, up due to inflation. Uh, post-COVID situation, uh, city has. Uh, you know, city has limitation on how much revenue it generates, right? Through real estate due to, uh, state levy limits and all that, right? This, this puts pressure on projects. How, how much can we achieve? How much can we achieve, right? Uh, I think that's also the reason that we struggle with, uh, uh, finding, uh, resources to fill. I think that's also the reason that we struggle with finding resources to fill open position within the city. I think this is something that I would like to collaborate in a creative solution to resolve this. So we have a mechanism to prioritize people's voices through lens of equity. Affordable housing, again, no different than, you know, what we talked about. I think there is real issue of, you know, whether you're buying a house or renting a house, it's just unaffordable period. We need to create more housing, whether it's single-family or multifamily home, right? We need to fund a creative solution around land banking where, you know, city buys land and develops permanently affordable homes. Another solution would be to utilize our TIF creatively to increase affordable housing supply. I think, you know, so those budget and affordable housing and, you know, I think there are some solution already implemented in flight. We just need to push through and make it more visible, make it more permanent.
Thank you. Our next question is from Alder Figaro Call.
Hello, Aslam. Thank you, Chair. You received a lot of feedback from residents surrounding a project in your district. Your general sense is 60% are in favor of the project and 40% are against it. How do you balance public feedback against policies, goals, and priorities? What steps, what steps do you take into consideration to arrive at your conclusion?
Yeah, it's a typical situation. I work for a big, you know, Fortune 100 company. It's, you know, it's hard to take everyone along, right? But sometimes, you know, the majority can be right or some others, other times it can be wrong. And same is true about the minority number, right? The solution is to educate both sides of the issue, right? And see the picture beyond district, right? The number is not the whole representation of the district, so there must be engagement, right? When we talk about numbers, we're talking about folks that are making themselves, their opinion heard or making themselves counted. But for every, every opinion counted, there are opinions that are not being made, right? So we just need to keep that into consideration as well, right? As an example, you know, if we have a new low-income housing or a homeless shelter coming in a district, it might be nuisance for some district resident. But at a city level, this is, this will be a strategic move to take care of a broader concern from the city point of view, right? If at a city level, we are not able to rehabilitate this population, they will cause other issues in and around the district and in the city. So there are times that the issues will have to be evaluated and explained with the lens of greater good for the broader population. I think with continuous engagement and deeper conversation, a good percentage of those 40% can be swayed into majority. Transparency and communication become vitally achieving it. As an alder, I would follow these steps, engagement from residents to evaluate the district opinion. So I think that engagement has to be, you know, that is an important factor. And then collaborate with other members of council to identify opportunity and the risk of the project, right? What is it that we're trying to achieve and what are the risks? Why is there that 40%, right? Finally, be transparent and communicate with the project, communicate the project outcome to the resident. This will help bring the district along and satisfy my personal due diligence to arrive at my position.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our final question is from Alder Heck.
Hi Aslam, how do you reach District 20 residents who are not engaged in traditional ways like neighborhood associations?
Yeah, thank you. You know, blog post, neighborhood association is the basic, you know, approach, but blog post, emails, hearing sessions, you know, creating office hours so they can reach out. And, you know, meeting with the technology and my, my exposure to technology, you know, hybrid meetings. I think that's very, very important, break the barriers and create welcoming environment through that, right? Because you have to consider transportation, whether people can make it, health issues, COVID. You know, it's, I think it's fabulous to have this opportunity where you could do hybrid meeting and, you know, and for key issues, even sending out mailing cards and letting them know that they are, they are being provided by the information and engaging them to listen. Those are the means that I think, you know, if I think about the ways you can engage our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions by Alders to clarify anything you heard in those answers? Not seeing any. Thank you so much. At this time, I asked Alders to use whatever they were doing to keep notes or keep score to spend a few moments to go through that and then log in and rank your choices. If anybody is having trouble, let me know. And I think, I guess actually we'll, we'll take a short recess, so I don't. Yeah, I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion, take a recess, or we just wanna, I mean, I assume we're all just gonna sit here and fill out our stuff.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, you want to take like a five-minute recess? Would that work?
Please.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, unless I hear others, I'll assume unanimous consent. And I'll be, I will be here, so if anybody has any issues logging in or figuring out that tool, just speak up.
I'll speak up. When I log on.
Is 7:19. Hopefully, everybody is back and ready to go. Karen, could you call the roll?
Senator Furman?
Present.
Vice President Curry is absent. Alder Bennett?
Here.
Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Figaro Call?
Here.
Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Abbas?
Yeah.
You have quorum.
Thank you, Karen. Alder Abbas, you are the only person I don't have a checkbox next to having pressed the review button. Do you want to just go ahead and check you press that and I'll tell it to process what it needs to process?
Yeah, I did review it and did you got it?
And now I do. Now there's a star next to your name, so it does look like you registered to vote for you. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and tally the results. Okay, after looking at the results, the person that was ranked number one was Matt Fair. So congratulations, Matt. Welcome back. Common Council Executive Committee will be recommending you for appointment at our June 7th meeting. I do again want to thank everybody for applying this evening. As I said, from experience, I know how difficult this is. I really want to encourage people to consider applying to committees. I'll be sending you all links to see the vacancies on our committees and learn more about that. And very importantly, I encourage you all to consider running in April. I think elections are an incredible way to meet your neighbors. I think contested elections are incredible, and we certainly need people like you to throw your hat in the ring again and offer your service. So thank you so much for being here this evening. And so with that, our next order of business would be the item that was referred to us, which is item 7103, nope. I'm looking at the, no, sorry, 71632, item number three on our agenda, if I can get a motion.
Move motion to adopt.
Okay, and that would be appointing Matt Fair as the alderperson for District 20 to serve until the spring of 2023 election. Can I get a second?
Okay.
Okay, is there any objection if we added everybody's name to this as a sponsor? If there's, if that's not a problem, I'd like Karen to do that and any discussion. Once I see otherwise, I'll approve, I'll assume approval by unanimous consent. Great, we have several other items on the agenda, but because we were pretty efficient yesterday at CCEC, those items have already been approved by the council, and we don't need to use the time that we have this evening to go over that. And so at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I just say thank you to everybody?
All right, I was gonna ask if we can have Matt speak or something. Does he want the job?
Before, before I do that, sure, Matt, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you and I look forward to working with everybody. And as Alder Furman said, I appreciate everybody else who are here and yes, definitely get involved.
Matt, thanks again. Matt, I'm gonna put you on the spot, so now you can't say no. I assume you don't have any issue with me providing all Alders with your email address after this meeting?
That is good, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, everybody. And now entertain the motion now that we gave Matt a moment to.
Yeah, I can make the motion, please, for adjournment.
Second.
All right, seeing no, no objection, I assume. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.